Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. Mr. Flaggman can call the roll, please.
Jennifer Harden.
Here.
Belinda Grassi.
Here.
Tom Hack.
Here.
Laurie Krasny.
Here.
Jack Miley.
Here.
I'll rise for the pledge, please. A pledge is...
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
On behalf of the Board, I would like to welcome all students, staff, parents, and interested community members to tonight's Board of Education meeting. I'd like to remind everyone this is the meeting of the Board of Education, held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business, is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is time for public comment during the meeting in the public participation section on the agenda. First up will be, I'm making a motion to approve the May 26, 2020 board minutes, the June 3, 2020 special meeting board minutes, and the June 10, 2020 special meeting board minutes. If I could have a second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hack. Is there any discussion? Now call the roll, please.
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Belinda Grassi.
Aye.
Tom Hack.
Aye.
Laurie Krasny.
Aye.
Jack Miley.
Aye.
Motion carried. And that takes us to special reports, Dr. Kailas.
We have nothing to add.
All right. All right, then next up is old business, if there's any. What about new business? All right, quickly moving through, Board of Education Committee Liaison Reports, Superintendent's Business Advisory Liaison. It is the summertime, so we don't have any of those yet. Hopefully, once the school year starts, we'll have those back on the agenda again. Right, Dr. Basset?
Yes.
All right, curriculum programming boosters, Mr. Miley.
We did not have a meeting on either one in the last one.
Finance audit personnel strategic plan, Mrs. Grassi.
We haven't had a meeting in the last month for that either. I'm legislative, not strategic plan.
You're right.
But I have nothing there either, so.
Okay. All right, Gloria, strategic plan. Buildings and grounds operation alumni association, Mr. Hack.
So we've not had a alumni association meeting recently, but we did have buildings and grounds. And really, we reviewed what's going on with the summer work. And I'll probably turn that over to Mr. Weiner, just to give us an update on that, so everybody can hear what's going on. But probably the biggest thing that we did is that many of you are perhaps aware of some of the pitting that's going on in the concrete at Parkside and Riverview. And so we have been investigating that, that we pulled samples, those samples have been evaluated, and we have identified those areas which need to be, you know, basically taken out and replaced. And Mr. Kailas, I saw on the Friday bulletin that perhaps there'd be some additional information today?
I don't have any, other than the fact that they're trying to identify people that bit on the concrete. I don't know exactly very...
We actually did receive the bids, like, late this evening. Talked to Chris Cezia, and I can go those now, right now, if he wanted, just had an idea of the scope of that, or I can wait till my report.
If you were planning to do it during your report, that's, why don't we wait for it then?
Okay, I'll go through it then.
Terrific. So we are moving forward, we're trying to get the schools squared away, so that when we receive them officially after the one-year warranty, that they're in as good shape as possible, and that we have all of the punch items taken care of. And Mr. Weiner, do you wanna comment on some of the activities that have gone on as far as the summer program, the worker program?
Right now, with us not hiring out summer staff that we normally have, what we've done is we've put it pretty much on the regular staff to do any painting that can be done inside, they're taking care of their own areas, their own classroom floors. We did get a big enough jump to get all the restrooms, where the top priority to make sure that we've cleaned and disinfected the bathroom floors, fixtures, and anytime that someone does come into our buildings now, we also work on, working in to get it disinfected and acknowledge who's in our weight room, and we make those just our priorities, and maybe pick out a few things that are not as important as those. So that's going well, everybody understands clean it and disinfect it, and so far, things are going along pretty well. The same thing that we just had our football stadium done, we had them come in, clean and put in fill that needed to be done, they cleaned the surface, and then they asked if I wanted it sanitized, and I said, "You bet." So the football field has a great look to it. If you've got nothing to do, and you pull in and take a little walk over there, I walked over there today, and it looks beautiful. We're ready on that part of things, and I think I'll talk about the moose boilers, what Gary calls my bell on that one.
I know that there was initially no old business, but isn't there something new associated with the stadium?
Band bleachers.
Band bleachers?
It's like the cell tower.
It is like the cell tower.
No, we have issues with the cell towers. No, it is complete, it is complete. There's a little bit of a discrepancy between what they had on their plans and what is out there to the tune of about 17 feet. We're dealing with that right now. What they do is they give you about 18 inches per person, and 18 inches on that band bleacher means about 435 students. In the past, we've had, what, about 220 people on the bandstands when it was on the field. But if you look at the actual documents, there's some mismarkings in terms of the length of some of the sections. So we've contacted them, we're gonna see what happens here. We're not really sure exactly where it's going. It is done now, we should have enough room, but we wanted as much room as the last bleacher that we had out there, and this is a little shy, but it's more than what it was ahead we put the band in the section in the...
In the stands.
In the stands. So it looks great, you know, you go out there, and I just wanna see what it looks like, with a few hundred kids on it, and with instruments, too. If indeed, if they have to add one section, it might be one extra stringer or rung, and just extending it out and, you know, taking the side off and reattaching the side. But in order to do that, they had to fabricate, you know, a piece of metal, it took them months to do it before. So I don't want them touching it until, you know, we're through with the season, and if indeed we have to make some changes, they'll have to come out and do that. But it is, it's great, it looks great, they cleaned it up right before graduation. People that are involved with the program are very happy with it.
Yeah, it has been a lot of trials and tribulations, and I know that there is no perfect solution. My personal opinion is this is pretty good, and may they last for a very long time, and may many future band players enjoy those bleachers and enjoy the Riverside regiments.
I tell you, the field looks so much better when it's in that position than what it had looked like when we were playing football. Those are rentals, just as the Bay Area rentals didn't seem all that great either. Let's hope we have a season.
Yeah.
That's true as well.
Yes?
That's it.
All right, thank you. Policy and strategic plan, Mrs. Krasny.
We have not had a policy committee meeting, I believe there is some new policy to review, though.
Yeah, there are some coming, I have to look, I don't see any current, no.
Okay. There is some coming. And there has not been a strategic plan, there's not been any meetings there.
Okay. All right, that takes us to the Superintendent's Report, Dr. Kailas.
Well, I've been really busy thinking about what we're going to do about school next year. Not only that, I'm also looking for personnel in the areas of Director of Operations and Director of Transportation. Things just haven't been working out for us so well this summer. It's just been one disappointment after another, we felt we had a candidate for Director of Operations, verbally he took it, and then he decided not to take it, and that was after a two- or three-week period after we committed to him. We did interview a few other candidates for Director of Transportation. People come in, they interview, and then they don't wanna leave their particular district. I think it's extra hard this year, too, because of everything that's going on with the health crisis. So I do have a candidate tomorrow, we're interviewing for Director of Transportation, and I have another one coming in on Thursday for Director of Operations. We've also reached out to TransFinder to see that if they might be able to at least provide us with some type of resource, if need be, to help us get the routes to where we need them to be for next year. We also have one of our secretaries over there, he's been there for many years, very, again, resourceful employee, decided that she was going to retire, we wish her the best, but it just leaves us with one less person over there. So right now, Donna is pretty much running the show over there along with the camps, and we're gonna do everything we can to help them along, but again, it's such a niche area, we need to get somebody in there sooner than later. We sent out surveys to parents to try to find out what they were thinking about moving into the next year. I have, wanna share some... We sent the survey to parents on June 18th, the survey was open to parents until the 24th, and we had over 2,000 responses, which represents about 65% of our households. And again, we're just trying to gauge where their minds are at after the past spring about the whole health crisis, and where they think they might wanna be in terms of sending their children back to school. One of the questions we asked are in favor, starting after Labor Day. In my discussions with superintendents in Geoga and Lake and Ashkewill County, there's some talk about pushing it back to after Labor Day, and I'll get to that in a little bit. This doesn't surprise me much, almost 80% said that they would want that. In our district, that seems like, you know, every year, they would rather have it instead of after Labor Day. It's just a common theme over the past few years. I don't think, again, I don't think it's really an indication of the health crisis, and like I said, we'll visit what other districts are doing later in the presentation. We also asked if public health officials determine it's safe to return to school, how comfortable are you sending your child to school? And five, oh, I gotta move this here. Five is very comfortable, and one is not comfortable, and you can see that 64.7% said either four or five that they're very comfortable, and if you add three in there, you have 84.3. So to at least some degree, parents do feel comfortable sending their children back to school. 7% said that they are not comfortable. Another question was, what measures do you think are most important to maintain safety in our schools with regards to COVID-19? Well, they said 92.9% said regularly disinfecting classrooms, which we're doing and have been doing the past few months. 84% said breaks for hand washing and sanitizing. 49.8% said social distancing. 37.2% said staff wearing masks, and what I thought was interesting is that only 30.3% of the parents said that they would want their students wearing masks, so only a third. We also asked, do you plan on utilizing bus transportation for 2021? And over 52% said yes, almost 28% said no, and little over 20% said maybe. We currently transport 2,581 Riverside students, that's not the only ones we transport, we also transport non-public, 272 children, 11 for community school and 69 special ads, for a total of 2,933 kids. If you look at the number of Riverside students that we transport, our own students, about 61% is the representation of that number. So we're not too far off, again, that 52 are saying yes, that would take, 20 would say maybe, we might end up about the same as we have been over the past few years, which is 61%. 61% represents this past year. We also asked, if required to do a blended model, what model would you prefer? This is a trick question, but we wanted to find out how parents were feeling about, you know, if we were to go to a blended model. To be perfectly honest with you, we're looking at three models, one is a traditional model, one is totally remote learning, and one is some type of blended model. Blended model is the last one we would want to offer, only because we think it's more stressful for parents, and having kids in and out of the classroom doesn't provide for really any consistency. And I'll get to that in a few minutes as well. But 55.9% said alternating days within the week, that they would rather see two days on, three days off, and then the next week, three days on, two days off. And then they weren't really thrilled about having one full week on, one full week off. The question, like I said, was not asked because we believe a blended model should be recommended, it was asked in case we were forced to do so due to restrictions handed down to the state of Ohio. At this point, is our recommendation, it's used back to a traditional model with personal protection measures. One of the things I wanted to share also with the Board is an article, and I wanna touch on it before I go any further. You know, and I'm passing this out while we're hearing that there's a fight in cases in state of Ohio. But what was interesting in this really short article is that the American Academy of Pediatrics had a few things to say about students going back to school next spring. There's only a couple items I wanted to point out in this article.
Fall or spring?
I mean, this fall. One is, the American Academy of Pediatrics has strongly advocates that all policy considerations for the coming school year should start with the goal of having students physically present in school. They go on to say that, based on the nation's experience this spring, remote learning is likely to result in severe learning loss and increased social isolation. Social isolation in turn can bring serious social and emotional and health issues. It includes abuse, sexual abuse, substance abuse, depression, and suicidal ideation. And they also wanted to say, and this is what I thought was really interesting, they argue that offering elementary school children the opportunity to go to school every day should be given due consideration over spacing guidelines if capacity is an issue. In other words, what they're saying is, if you have to look at the two, what is more important, keeping kids apart or having them in school? And they're saying it's more important to have them in school, regardless of whether or not you can separate them. It says, schools should weigh the benefits of strict adherence to a six-feet spacing rule between students with a potential downside to remote learning as the only alternative. And they go on to say, they also argue that masks are probably not practical for younger children, younger than middle school, unless they can wear a mask without increased face touching. One of the things we talked about is, you know, whether or not we should require kids to wear masks, and we're looking at it possibly in transportation and moving throughout the building, but not during the whole day when they're sitting in the classroom, so long as we can kinda space them out. As an adult, I mean, can you imagine having a mask on for eight-hour, seven-hour period? And we just don't think it will be a very practical thing. But again, we're still waiting to see, but the guidance is from the state of Ohio. We also asked teachers what they were thinking, in terms of some questions here. This teacher survey, we kept pretty good response rate, we have about 270 certified staff, 216, which is about 80%, responded to this survey. And in the survey, we asked a couple of questions, too, is whether or not they feel comfortable delivering instruction in a remote model. Now, all of them had a good taste of it this past spring, and I can say it wasn't the greatest experiment, no fault of anybody, so it was just very difficult to do it when you're always, you know, teaching in a traditional manner. One, again, is not comfortable, five is very comfortable, and we have 76.4% that said that they feel relatively comfortable doing it. But in the next few questions, we're gonna see how many are really, really willing to do it again, which isn't all that many. Now, if you add the 20.8%, you almost say up 100%, it's 97.2%. If a district were to offer home-care distance learning option for students, I would volunteer to teach online. 24.5% said yes, 37% said no, and a 38.4% said maybe. I believe this is an indication that our teachers know the value of face-to-face instruction over remote learning. Now, I meet with superintendents once a month on a regular basis. When this COVID health crisis hit, we were meeting once a week, sometimes twice a week. Area superintendents in other districts are doing all that they can to try to prepare for next year, but there's a lot of discussion going on, because we don't wanna be offline from one another, especially when we're feeding students the likes of Auburn Career Center, and you don't wanna be, you know, an outlier there doing something totally crazy. So a couple of things that we're thinking about, isn't only like, you know, bus capacity or classroom size, but there's a lot of other things that go into it. This list isn't a comprehensive list, if you think about it, these are the things that are gonna impact our delivery of schooling next year. Again, bus capacity limitations, you have classroom size, right, how many people can be in a classroom, cafeteria capacity, nurse house and safety protocols, ordering personal protective equipment, cleaning, how do we clean, how often do we clean, where do we clean? Band, choir, and it's my understanding that we have the similar plan for the Health Department over those two classes, because of particles coming out of instruments and knots when they're singing. Fall sports, what does that look like, fan attendance, gate revenue? Again, required personal protective equipment for staff, students, and visitors, should we even have visitors? Well, parents are gonna come to the school, and they're picking up the kids, but should we actually have them in the classroom anymore? And I'm telling you right now, it doesn't seem like many schools are allowing that come fall, they have parents helping in classrooms. Parents' level of comfort, sending children back, outside groups using the facility, I mean, those are the calls we're getting all of last month. Wasn't so much with school-sponsored programs, but it was Little League, it was basketball practice, it was all these different group funding to use the facilities. And we're doing all we can to continue to do that. If we hear that we can't through the state, we'll stop it, until then, we're continuing to do business like we do. Out-of-state student employee travel, required with suggested guidelines, or required versus suggested guidelines. Faculty and staff with compromised immune systems, who's gonna wanna come back if they can't? Start dates, again, and transitioning plans from one instructional delivery model to another depending on the severity of the health crisis. That's one common thing that we heard from the state, is that even if we start back in a traditional model, we might, 48 hours, need to be back in remote learning. It's starting to scare me a little bit because of the cases are going up again. And the other thing is reporting cases, what our liability as a district is. Talking to the Health Department, they're telling us that if we know that there's a case, our obligation is to report it to them, and they'll take care of it from that point. They'll tell us whether or not we're being in school or not, we just need to report it to them. They say it's very difficult to chase down where that person was exposed. So again, we're looking at the three possible scenarios, traditional school, the PPE protocols, online, line, remote learning, hybrid schedule. And I have to tell you that by now, if you asked me if we would have known what we were doing, I would say, back in, say, April, I'd say absolutely. Can keeps on getting kicked down the road, when you look at what we're getting out of the Governor's Office, what we're getting out of the Ohio Department of Health, and what we're getting out of the Ohio Department of Education. I put Lake County General Health District on there, and I'm not criticizing them, and all they've been very accessible to us and very helpful. The only problem is that they're not getting a lot of guidance in the county, either. So anytime you go to them with a plan or an idea, they say, "Well, I think it's okay, you know, we'll find out when those guidelines come down," but they've been really good to us. I really wanna commend, I was gonna say commend, Ron Graham from Lake Health, and from Lake County Health, General Health District, and also Tom Wade from Geoga County. What we're hearing, again, a lot of this is gonna fall on the locals. And if it falls on the locals, that's one of the reasons why we're preparing for a traditional local, we haven't heard anything else, and the last thing we have with the superintendents, which was on June 19th, I believe it was, which was a Friday, that's where everyone is going at this point.
Is anyone at this point going to a blended model, or is everyone kind of preparing for a traditional?
We're gonna go over that in just a second.
Okay.
Yeah. So traditional school transportation, one of the things that we're talking about prior to June 19th was having one student per bench seat in 72 seats a bus. 24 benches, one to a seat, be 24 kids. I'm sorry, before that, it was gonna be between nine and 14 kids, they're gonna do every other seat. They were asking us to possibly put up shower curtains, and you have the bus driver wear shields. The Ohio, the, what do you call, the highway control, they said, "Absolutely not, you can't see out the bus, the shields will steam up, you can't do that." So then, there was some discussion about having one student per seat, 24 kids in a bus, if you have siblings, they can sit with you. I pulled one random route out and looked at, it was nine to 10 stops, and by the fifth stop, we already had our limit of 24 students on that bus. That concerns me. So I did say to Ron Graham that it's our, you know, desire to have traditional school transportation, just like a lot of the other schools, providing transportation, assuming there's no capacity restrictions, but with a couple of PPE protocols, like hand sanitizer, we're looking to put hand sanitizer on the bus. We're looking to have masks, although we're not real big on having the kids wear masks throughout the day, since they're sitting close together, we figured that at least we're, while they're riding on the bus, board the bus from front to back, pull it from the back, move it all the way to the front. When you exit, the opposite, we're exiting from front to back, and disinfecting between routes if we can. And if parents feel uncomfortable with this scenario, they may choose to transport their own children. I don't know what else we can do if they don't feel comfortable with those protocols, and thus finding transportation without diminishing it anyway, whatever you have. Also, traditional school instruction, assuming, again, there's no classroom capacity restrictions, space students apart, use hand sanitizer in classroom in common areas, frequent hand washing, and really truly showing the kids how to wash their hands. I know that sounds silly, you know, but even as adults, we're not singing the alphabet or, you know, Rudolph or whatever it is, you sing while you're washing your hands. It has to be thorough. Elementary, middle school students have unlimited movement, since they're on teams and then, you know, containing classes. Students possibly leave in their classrooms, we're splitting them up. Masks when traveling throughout the building. Again, if parents are uncomfortable with this scenario, we're trying to create an online option for our parents, very similar to what we did in the spring. If a student chooses a participation, it will be by semester, semester commitment. Teachers with health concerns will be the first to consider for online instruction as well.
So can I ask with the spacing students apart, in our elementary building, in particular Riverview and Parkside, we have tables, there are shared tables, so how is something like that? Is it expensive to do something like that?
It is. Even the dividers that are out there are expensive. And we've ordered some PPE, we have not ordered those yet, and we have ordered masks, I'll get to that in a minute. As of this week, this is what it looks like kind of around the county. That remote destruction delivery, Kirtland will zoom directly into the classrooms. I even talked to Bill Wade about it, and, you know, we have a little bit of concern that it's difficult to have a kid at a computer at home for, you know, six and a half hours of instruction. Will Beasley said, "Hey, man, I'm all in or I'll out," that's what Steve Thompson told me. And at that point, it didn't sound like they were gonna even offer an online option. Now, again, I'm speaking back in June 19. Matter would use a model, use the same model that they used in the spring, Pageville City as well, and Perry as well.
Could you elaborate on that?
Yeah, what do you mean by that?
Just strip it online, then?
It's just like it was in the spring, they're gonna take some of their teachers, again, possibly ones that have... They're going to take some of their teachers, again, possibly ones that have, they can't come back, and they're going to provide that instruction online to their students in lieu of coming into a traditional setting.
So, they're not going to come back into buildings at all?
No. In terms of start dates, Kirtland is planning to start after Labor Day on the eighth, which is a Tuesday. Manner strongly considering after Labor Day start. They have not committed to it yet. Painesville City was going to do after Labor Day, but talking to Josh Engelhardt a few days ago, they pushed it back a couple of days. They're starting on the twenty-sixth. Madison is considering delaying their start until September first. Angela Smith, the superintendent over there, is talking to our board about tomorrow. They have a board meeting. And Riverside is currently on August twenty-fifth, which is also Tuesday.
Jim, what is the thought process behind starting the after Labor Day at this point?
I don't know. I was afraid to go down there to Madison.
It just pushes it.
It does. It pushes it back. There was some discussion about having it, you know, early on. There's some discussion about whether or not COVID is going to be spiking more in the middle of the summer or if it's going to be in the fall. I think a lot of them are pushing it back just to give themselves some extra time to prepare for the year.
So, the schools that are going to, do you happen to know, like, so, Manner, Painesville City, Perry are going all online. Are they completely not even entertaining the thought of fall sports then either?
No.
If fall sports are to happen?
If sports are to happen, I would assume that those students would be able to give them opportunity to participate if they're online.
It just seems crazy that you'd not have them.
We do that with homeschool students, huh?
No, I know. I'm just saying, it just seems crazy to say you can't be in a building together, but then you can tag each other on the football field.
Have they discussed anything around the grading and how they will approach that? For Manner was the one that came up that they went eighty to one hundred for an A.
Yeah, I'm assuming, that's interesting. That's a good question to ask because you know you have kids that are in, in regular traditional fashion. Does that mean they're going back to the traditional grading scale? And opposed to the ones that are going to be online? I don't know the answer to that.
Are they, I think, have two models going at the same time, or are they just going strictly all online?
What's true?
Like Manner.
Manner, from what I understand, will be a traditional in school, and if parents feel uncomfortable, they may have an option.
Oh, I thought you were saying.
We might misunderstand.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah. So, they're going to school?
They're going to school. Let me clarify this. When you look at the screen, Kirtland will zoom directly into the classroom. While the teacher is teaching and the kids are in the classroom, the ones that don't want to be there because they're afraid of the virus, they'll be on a computer or Chromebook while the teacher is conducting class and interacting with the student. That's not how Manner's doing it, Painesville City, Perry, or Riverside. What we're doing is we're going to have a traditional model if the state allows us where students come to school. If parents feel that uncomfortable about sending their kids to school, we are going to provide an online option for them outside of school, like we had in the spring. We don't know what the numbers look like right now, but we had about close to sixteen percent that said that they would consider, it was sixteen percent about, right? Yeah. And another eight that said that they would think about it.
So, what is our, what was our deciding factor between what Kirtland is doing and not doing that?
I think that a lot of the other districts actually realize it's very difficult to have a kid on a computer for as long as the teacher is teaching, you know, six and a half hours of instruction, you know, at the school day. We won't have that. It will be similar to what we would before. To change our date, if the board's interested, we mocked up a couple of calendars if you'd like to take a look at them. I'm not sure if I'm recommending it or not. Eighty percent want us to push it back. We can. I think we'll be ready on the twenty-fifth, but we can push it back. But in order to do that, we have to have a public hearing via board meeting thirty days in advance of the start of the school year. So, we have about two months to do it. Well, we have about a month, not two months, but a month, maybe. And I'm assuming that we may be having another board meeting before late July because we have a couple of people I'm hoping to recommend to the board and might need to hire them. We can do it via Zoom.
I think there's something to be said, though, for starting after Labor Day. If we're going to require masks even in any kind of form, and we're talking about our buildings that are un-air-conditioned and things like that to get us through as much of summer and hot months as possible.
It'll be bad. If we, if the kids are required to wear masks, especially in Melrose and Buckeye.
For here?
Yeah. Especially with the little kids, though. It's not a good scenario. It really isn't.
No, but I think there's value in starting later just to get through some of that, if possible.
Yes, well, if the board is interested in it, we can start moving towards that.
How do you guys feel?
I don't have a preference for either of the other ones you're applying.
I don't have a preference for either.
I think we should. And so, the question is, would you argue it's face masks?
Pushing to Labor, after Labor Day.
I would take the recommendation as well. Is there a, how are Wickliffe and Madison planning to go back?
Wickliffe and Madison? I don't know. Wickliffe wasn't represented at the meeting on the nineteenth. It's an annual retreat that we have out in Geneva, and I think that they've, they don't subscribe now to the Western Reserve. They go out to Quahog County. It doesn't mean we don't talk. I mean, we still interact with them, but they weren't at the meeting. I can find out. And Madison doesn't know what they're doing yet. Are you talking about in terms of instruction or are you talking in terms of the date going back?
More in terms of instruction.
Yeah. I, they were there, but I don't think I got their input. I could have asked Angela today. I spoke to her about some other issues that I can find out. I'm assuming they're going to be doing what Perry does. We also had a work session with district employees last week. We discussed what worked and what didn't this past spring, and this meeting was representative of a lot of different people from a lot of different departments and different grade levels. We discussed the current environment that we're in right now, and we were working our discussions around four frames of reference. What do we want in the daily life of our students coming in the fall? Same with our staff, our teachers, and how to fulfill our students and staff's social emotional needs as well? And what do we do, what do our daily operations look like? And we broke it down into some committees. We shared some of this information with them. We wanted to have them come back and talk a little bit about, in more detail, about things like the teaching and learning aspect of it, the transportation, the food service, health and safety, custodial maintenance, and daily functions of the district. And with that said, we have ordered sanitizer. It's expensive, it is. We, right now, we're ordering three hundred and seventy-five thousand milliliter classroom dispensers that will be put on the wall. They're the electric ones, so the kids aren't touching anything. We have seventy-eight dispensers that are going to be on stands that will be put out throughout common areas, like entrances, offices, media centers, a couple in the hallways. Students can use them readily even if they're walking in the hallway. We also ordered eight hundred and fifty gallons of sanitizer product. That is basically two gallons per dispenser, and this is just a start, just so you understand. After, also infrared thermometers for our clinics. One of the things you're going to see on the board agenda is we're trying to lift the restrictions of allowing me and Gary the ability to only commit fifty thousand dollars. We want it closer to a hundred. Even right now, with this, what I read to you is about thirty-one thousand dollars. Now, we still have masks we don't know about. We were going to order them, but like I said, the Governor is kind of kicking the can down the road. He was supposed to give us guidelines last week. Then it was supposed to be Tuesday of this week. He spoke Monday of this week, yesterday, and now he's supposed to come out with guidelines on Thursday. I didn't know what to get, whether it's like just a cloth throwaway ones for twenty-five cents a piece or the N ninety-five masks if we're required. And we're talking the amount of like five to six thousand dollars worth of masks to start with. So, we didn't want to commit to it. We believe that the company we're working with will have a turnaround time, and we'll have those before the start of the year. Also, face shields. We have a couple of different vendors we're looking at. He's one of them, one of them that we ordered the sanitizer from. And also sneeze guards. You know, sometimes with our tutors, they're right on top of it, you know, right face-to-face with the students. And also common areas, again, like when you have food service, you have secretaries, counters, where we need something to protect them as well. So, we've been busy, and I'm still looking for a transportation director and a director of operations. Hopefully, we'll have those people recommended to the board in the next week or two.
Jim, will we get, and Dan, will we have the staffing capacity to be able to install all of that before, like with our limited resources for the summer now?
We talked today that when we get it in, we're not going to pay to have the dispensers put in. There are two. Couple of bolts in the wall, and we'll figure that out.
And like office, you know?
And we're going to meet with a gentleman with Jim on Tuesday at nine-thirty to start looking at the shields. We're going to walk throughout the district to see where we need them, what kind of, what we need. I need some for the ladies also in the back, you know, they're in the cubicles back there. We need them in guidance, we need them where the secretaries are. I'm sure those aren't the only ones. We'll walk through the district, will give us a better idea of what we need.
You know, when this, when the pandemic started, to get that much sanitizer, would it cost you sixty thousand?
I know. I got to tell you, though.
It was really expensive.
We're getting inundated with emails of every supplier around. This one is more local, he's out of Warren. And the face shield is actually a former student. He started his own business. We've been talking to him as well. We want to kind of streamline it as much as we can where we get it from the same vendor, same good pricing, and not have to jump all the way around. The issue we're having right now with the buses is that there's restrictions on alcohol-based liquids and how much liquids you can have on a bus. Can't have more than twelve ounces, they can't be alcohol-based. So, I didn't know that. It was our mechanic that read some of the regulations because we're going to put those on the bus, and now we're holding off on ordering those until we know exactly what we can put on there. He's going to call down to the state and find out, are they going to relieve us of some of these restrictions? I mean, we can put the dispensers on there and only fill it up to twelve ounces, but it's still alcohol-based sanitizer. This one is, I think, seventy-five percent. They say you want sixty or above.
I think, I think based on the experience that we've had at my office, that if you get enough people to band together and have conversations with the people down in Columbus, they will change their restrictions daily.
So, come Thursday, this might be a whole different ballgame. We're going to be watching on Thursday to see what the Governor has to say. And that concludes my report. Other than congratulations to the class of twenty-twenty, you guys have a good time out there.
That was great. All right, anybody got any questions?
Yeah, but thank you for all that information. That's really helpful.
All right, Mr. Blackwell, you're up.
Those slides today, just a few updates not to go through. First thing I wanted to share is we received the Otter's State Award for this year, two thousand nineteen. Ohio, sadly, last basically a year ago is when that basically ended. So, we're always excited to get that. They dropped that off to us this afternoon.
How about a round of applause? Congratulations.
Had an elementary update. You know, at our last special meeting, we approved a lease agreement for the Icestem High School to move in there. So, they started moving in last week, just as a reminder, it's a two-year lease. They're getting ready to get set up over there, getting ready for the school year. The rear portion of the property, we're still working on closing that because of the township. They look at the Planning Commission, they found an error in the deed, so we had to re-prepare the deed, and it's hard to sign up on that today, and I have to go back to them to review. So, we're just keep going through the steps. It's been months of going back and forth, but.
One of the other things I wanted to mention to the board, too, is that they are responsible with the grown PPE equipment.
Oh, the Icestem in the building. Township's taking care of the property in the backyard, so they're cutting the grass. So, even though the title hasn't transferred, it's just the behind-the-scenes paperwork going on at this point, but hopefully we get that included in the near future. The state budget cut for this current dispute is ending today. As everyone knows, the Governor announced that we were being cut one million, one hundred and nineteen thousand dollars in this fiscal year. They started recruiting those funds from our state payments. I paid back the balance that we owed to them, so we trued it up, you know, to just a different approach we took from when we did the five-year forecast based on the way that they're doing the cuts and making sure we balance the quotes and things like that. So, we paid back everything to the state at this point, so we're good at this point. There's still no word at all about what this coming school year is going to look like. All I know is Aaron Rauch from COE has said in the past to expect a cut of the same, not more. However, the state legislature did pass House Bill one sixty-four, which approved what's called like an offset reduction payment. So, districts that were cut more than, because we get funding through the Federal Cares Act, so we net our state budget cut with the additional funding we get from the Cares Act, they capped your cut at six percent. So, if you work out the math, so out of our one million, one hundred and nineteen thousand dollar cut, we got back one hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. So, you know, it's still one hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars, you know, it would be nice to have more than that back, but, you know, we already did that, and that was in this current dispute as well. Basically, what they did is they reduced it from what we owed back to the state, so we just paid back one hundred and eighty-one thousand or less to the state. And hopefully, we'll know what the next fiscal year looks like, so we can plan for that and kind of have a general idea.
The cares money we get back when we drive?
Yeah, the cares money, yeah, we're going to use that in fiscal year twenty-twenty-one that starts, you know, tomorrow. We have to go through the application, I mean, you have to go through the application process through CCIP, and then you guys submit documentation, we reimburse for expenses that are incurred. On tonight's agenda is our annual school bus purchase that we do, five buses a year. This year, something Mr. Halford worked on before he passed away was he wanted to purchase a couple gasoline buses. So, we're going to move forward with three gasoline buses and two diesel buses. They have the same horsepower, similar. I guess they've tested them out, and they seem to be working well. So, we're going to get a couple of those with, you know, it's been through the Ohio Schools Council, and they're actually a few thousand dollars cheaper than these.
Did he ever relate to you why he wanted a mix, to mix the fleet?
I think it was just wanted to try them out, get a couple to try them out and to see if it's something that we want to convert to over the long term. So, that's why we didn't commit to five gasoline this year. I think it was just, you know, it was kind of a decision that was in process, and we'll get a couple because, you know, obviously, our mechanics are used diesel engines and we have parts for that. We want to see, does this run better and more efficient, and, you know, they're a little cheaper.
I think you also mentioned too, in one of our discussions, that it has something to do to the cold starts in the winter. So, they were supposed to be better for.
Well, diesels are definitely harder to start.
Do we have tanks out there?
Yeah, we have a gasoline tank out there. We do have, and they'll have the six camera systems on as well, you know, standard putting it on. We do have a bus grant that we've been allocated through the State of Ohio as part of the Miami Budget, where we're getting, well, we're proposed to get eighteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars unless the state decides that that's one of the budget cuts this year. So, we may have eighteen thousand dollars towards that purchase. And there's also another grant that won't be cut that I'm planning on applying for through the Ohio Volkswagen Trust Fund, this type of settlement fund that they set aside. There's a bus grant as part of that, something I'm going to try to apply for, that we can purchase more buses probably in the spring of twenty-twenty-one, get some funds towards that. We'll just kind of expedite next year's purchase if we're awarded the grant. But it looks like we can get like twenty-five percent match, so if we buy four buses, basically buy three, get one free type of thing. So, I'm going to apply for that and see if we, if we can get those funds later this year. Another item on tonight's agenda is for parking lot repairs. It's about, I think it's nineteen thousand and change, just to do some parking lot repairs throughout the district. The authorization to bid out the welding lab projects on tonight's agenda, basically giving us permission to continue forward with going off for bid for that project to do the welding lab. Our goal is to bid it out in July and have pricing by the next board meeting, and then we can decide that. And then we can decide at that point, you know, we have, we'll have the board approve whether or not we'll move forward or not. Over that looks like, I think the total projects around four hundred thousand, I believe, Melissa, there's somewhere around that range, about four hundred thousand for the welding project is what we're thinking.
Yeah, we were hoping to be around three fifty and then maybe have a large transformer. I know lots of, I'll say the lead too.
Will the scope of that project change if we decide to move forward with the facility here sooner rather than later?
We can take some of it out, not all of it.
That's why we're gonna go to bid and then we'll come back and then we'll session. You know what I mean, so we know, we have a better idea because truly we're just, the, the, obviously the estimate is just a ballpark. We've got really vast to get, a better idea of what the cost actually is for each of the pieces, um, and then come back and then, then you guys can get it.
Would it mean, what the equipment would be removable and the improvements wouldn't have, obviously, okay, so.
With the state of schools, um, are these other members still on board with all this and the planning of this?
Yeah, everything's a little wonky though, because, I mean, if we were going to do it, this is a good time to do it because these hands-on classes are much more difficult to try to figure out how we're gonna manage delivering that instruction. So to, to shut down the welding lab right now, you know, through January isn't a terrible thing. But now we're delayed six months, do you know what I mean? So it's affected, so everybody's, it's not, the program's not gonna run with the shared services like we had originally planned next year. It just can't, everybody's, there, nobody's gonna be transporting kids back and forth between schools. Nobody's, we're just not gonna, I think, be able to have that happen. But it is moving forward, everybody still wants to do it. Metta actually still has an interest in just purchasing seats if we have empty seats in a program that we would run in the future.
Right, and just for, for people who are listening in on the, on the meeting. Wickliffe, it's a consortium of four schools including Riverside, so Wickliffe would do EMT. Uh, Painesville City would do HVAC and then Perry would do construction. Our, our contribution would be the welding class. And it was in relation to one of our goals as a board to try to increase opportunities for our student population that's not going on the college.
I know this isn't directly in Gary's, but you just said that about the hands-on. Do we know what Auburn's plan is for the students? I mean, is everything with the suits for all the different districts still going to be the same as far as Auburn goes?
My discussions with Brian Bontempo a couple of weeks ago is, we're all, we're all in the same kind of way we've had them right now, but yes, there's no.
There's just different though, because there's so much more hands-on kind of things in there.
Yes, it's a great program, but yes, they're, they're very hands-on over there. I don't know what it looks like in terms of, wow, wow, kids are working at, you know, how many kids are working on a particular, you know, furnace or car or.
Right.
How many kids are, you know, you, you go in there and it's, because it's a popular program, there are a lot of kids in that building. They're gonna have the same issues that we're gonna have in the other schools, this, this social spacing. The, the, the problem that he's concerned about though is you have to have a certain amount of hours to get certified in some of these different areas. And he's afraid that, well, how do you get that if you're in remote learning? You know, because how do you, how do you learn how to repair brakes if, if you're on the other side of a computer? Or, you know, a.
CPR, whatever.
Right, yeah. We got a, we got a whole different set of problems though too.
Are they talking about trying to, um, I know last year like they started significantly earlier than we did. Is everyone talking to try to keep so bad?
E- every year he tries to get us all on the same page and. They just don't, and there's, there's inherently, there are a couple of superintendents in districts that always like starting early. Typically they're the ones that have air conditioning, have newer buildings. And we always start a little bit later, so we have people that start really early, we start later. You're looking, talking, looking at about twenty, uh, two to three week difference between their start time and ours. And then everyone else has had it in, in the middle. We're the ones that always start a little bit later than anybody else.
You know, Jim, I, just because Auburn, he has kids from a bunch of different districts, I wonder if maybe you'd be able to suggest to him, perhaps, if he would be willing to prepare some sort of video message so that it can be shown at perhaps a board meeting, so that parents could get information about what's happening at that school. Cause people don't get that.
I could have, I could have Brian.
Well, I mean, there's some, somehow that the folks would be able to get information about Auburn as well, because we do send kids there and, and it's not like it's our school, it's not our school, so we don't have control over what they're doing. What's that?
It's where our district's in the speed of.
So, you know, that might be helpful. Just to address the families that, that have kids that are going there.
Alright, the next item on my list, I'm gonna have Mr. Weiner help me out with this. Wanted to discuss the Lamueth boiler and the two options of what needs done over there. Now, Mr. Weiner, kind of elaborate on that.
Right, um, in, in my, my mind, thinking wise, the Lamueth is gonna be one of the buildings that we are keeping. The, the heating system over there is atrocious between the boiler that we had to continually put eight thousand dollars into leaks into one of the boilers. Naturally, the leaks were happening during the winter, so I had no choice but to replace these cast iron sections. I had fifty thousand dollars tied up into repairs, which, you know, it's ludicrous. So basically, we went out to look at what we're gonna do here. What's the long-term, uh, long-term goal? Well, I got a couple of prices on it. Uh, one was we could have replaced one boiler for one boiler, taken it out, brought in another new one. And we're not much better off because of pumps, um, the old chillers that are in there, the asbestos that's in the room. And pipes being replaced. Everything is so brittle because it's all, um, original stuff. So we went out and got a quote from CCG at state pricing. Basically what we'll get instead of just the one for one, and I still have one other old boiler in there that wasn't working for twelve years when I, when I started this job, and we did get it running. Um, so right now, um, this project will take care of putting two new boilers in. The removal of the old pumps and pipes and replace old chiller that's in there, removed asbestos. Is a separate, um, part of the, piece of the pie here. It's about ten thousand dollar-ish and that's something I'll find out about. And as part of the hot water boiler upgrade, um, we're gonna have the hot water tank replaced with a new insulated tank. So we're gonna replace it, gut it, paint it and put in two new boilers and, um, we won't worry about that building heat.
So what's, what's the, yeah, how much money is that?
I believe it, it's not on tonight's agenda, because we have a chance to discuss it as before, but I think the quote from CCG using the state term pricing was, it's a lot, it's a three hundred and eighty-one thousand, they had a ninety dollars is the, is the quote. And then plus additional estimate about ten thousand for the asbestos, so it's a, it's a pretty large project. You know, the, the alternative option is just replacing the one boiler. Problem is it's not through state term pricing, so we have to go out and, you know, go out for a bid, big proposals and all that stuff too. You know, I think, I think.
In reality, you know, if both boilers need to be replaced in that building, pumps, that once I get into a winter, it's pretty scary about these pumps, pipes, everything's brittle. I, if anyone ever wanted to take a little walk through the park, be happy to show, um, anybody kind of where we're at with that. Um, but we're kind of on a timeline as we always are with stuff. Where we need to, to, to go one way or another here.
What would they do, I'm sorry, what would they do then?
We'd start right away with paperwork, start to get the, um, boilers ordered, we start to get the old stuff out there to start demoing it and, um, I think what she's asking is are they gonna be ready for winter?
Yes.
So, so based on the fact that we would replace that and we had the, wasn't it the HVAC, the stuff that was upstairs?
For the chiller.
And those, those were the chillers, right, for all the stuff, but we, we did that, so like we'd be in good shape. Yeah, the air handling, so we'd be in good shape in that building.
Yeah, if we, if we get this project done, I'm just, I'm letting you know that we're, that we're in good shape.
That's big mechanical stuff.
And yeah, as far as, to the best of my knowledge, yeah.
And this all comes out of PI?
It comes out of PI, yeah.
It's been a little while since I've seen the five-year forecast for the, the PI.
Right, that's, that's the thing too, we need to go through that as well, which is why we're, we're prepared to have on tonight's agenda to make sure that, you know, without punching numbers, we should have funds available, uh, in the building to balance our PI fund in our next tax advance plan here in a few weeks. Between, cause I believe our, our, we have more than a million dollars right now in our, in our PI fund cash balance, I don't know the exact number, don't quote me, but it's, it's more than a million. But between us purchasing the Lamueth chiller project, uh, the welding lab project and another item on tonight's agenda is purchasing teacher laptops, things like that. You know, we just gotta make sure that we're in a good place and comfortable place. But, uh, but the, the recommendation is that, you know, if we're gonna do this project, we do it right, we do the full replacement, especially the, the Lamueth being, you know, we're committed to keeping that building for a, a long period of time, so, uh, you know, we're kinda making sure that the PI fund is in good shape to move forward. And then, uh, we'll get, you know, all the legal paperwork together and everything for proper, for approval, which we're applying in part of the special meeting that we.
Does that stuff count for locally funded initiatives for our overall facility plan?
It could, that's something we'd have to look into, I mean, we might get a ten percent credit. You know, until we move forward with the plan, part of it, right now the only, the only calculating the credit that's on Parkside at this point. But that's something that, you know, we'll obviously track over then when that time comes.
Could be of a credit, I mean, I just wanna make sure that we get every penny.
And I mentioned as part of that too, on tonight's agenda, we are planning on moving forward with purchasing two hundred and ten teacher laptops for the fall to be prepared for VR back to remote learning. And also we, we, when we did the new building project, we did do laptops for Parkside, Riverview for all the teachers so they can move around the classroom. But I'm gonna make sure that all teachers in the district are, are, have that option. And, cause that was one of our challenges with the switch to online learning now, because the, you know, teachers not being equipped with the equipment that they needed. So it's a purchase not to exceed a hundred and seventy thousand, I think the, the quotes have come in much lower than that. Uh, just determining which one we're gonna go with, uh, that's also on tonight's agenda and making sure to be prepared for this coming school year.
Two questions, will those need free access? No, cause it's just all online stuff, right? They don't need to access district networks?
To use them?
Yeah.
No.
It's cause it's all online.
They can use our internet, it's just, these are, these were not robust enough to do a Zoom meet, a good Zoom meeting and things like that. So we, this was the plan all along to start to phase that in, it's just getting expedited.
And we're using, is the plan to use Cares money for that, correct? Wasn't that the plan?
We were kind of tossing around how we're gonna do that. We have to work through that, because we're gonna use it one way or another, just which expenses are we gonna tag, which is a plan. There's a lot of hoops we have to jump through and have to go through.
Maybe we should have a finance meeting to like go over the PI fund and some of our other fund balances and some of this kind of stuff in the next, maybe before the next board meeting then.
There's been a lot happening, trying to get it all together, especially in fiscal year in, on top of.
Be available.
We'll get a meeting together to go over that. Another thing on tonight's agenda was approval of a few new funds. A few months ago at finance, we talked about creating a termination benefits fund. Uh, so that, what that's for is for severance payments to anybody who retires. When people retire, you know, vacation time, they may have accrued, their sick time, portion of that, they get paid out as a severance payment. Just like a different, separate fund from that, from the general fund, that we do an annual transfer of funds to, to kind of budget that and level out the spike. Cause some years you have one or two retirements, some years you might have ten. So one year you might pay out a couple thousand dollars in severance, one year you might pay out a couple hundred thousand in severance. So what we did was we had, we worked through the process of figuring out, um, what's appropriate enough to transfer that fund to kind of level that out and then start building a little bit of a rainy day fund for when there's large retirements. Uh, in my previous district, we had one of these funds and when the STRS made a, the change of the elderly to retire, we had, uh, it was like thirty-some teachers retired and paid out like seven hundred and eighty thousand severance in one month. So having this fund was, was critical to, to, you know, managing that cash and all things like that because some years it's much higher, some years it's much lower, so that's on tonight's agenda to create that fund. And also, uh, new funds, five oh seven and five oh eight. Five oh seven is the elementary and secondary school emergency relief fund. That's a fund we're gonna use for the Federal Cares Act funding, just they called S, ESSCR, S R is their acronym for that one. And then five oh eight, the governor's emergency education relief fund is another fund that we're told to have ready to go, but nothing's been announced that there's any funding coming from that, so that's kind of just a placeholder. If, if there's additional funding from this pandemic to the governor, we'll be able to use. Alright, two more items on the list than I've done. We'll go through, uh, we did receive the bids this afternoon, as we said, about the, the Sidewalks at Parkside and Riverview. Icon received three bids for each site. One of the bidders didn't use the correct bid form, so they're working through that challenge and making sure the numbers are right. So we don't have that till tomorrow. They're a little concerned if it includes the scope of the entire project or not. So we don't have that number yet, we have two bids from two companies. So for Riverview, the company bid that, uh, did the work initially, they bid for Riverview ninety-eight thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars for sidewalk replacement. The other company bid twenty-seven thousand, six eleven, so it's a very, very large discrepancy between the two. I talked to Chris Hees at Icon, the company that came in lower, he said that's actually more in line with what he was expecting. And it's a company that he's done many projects with, so it's not just, uh, you know, some random place that they put in a bid. For Parkside as well, the, this, one of the bids came in from the company that originally put in the work, hundred eighty-two thousand, five hundred and eighty. And then the other company bid seventy-nine thousand, two seventy-nine, so it's another drastic difference there. There's also alternates to replace the dumpster pads and to, to, uh, install an upgraded sealer to cement to avoid any additional deterioration that was put in, that was replaced. So we're all in costs with, if we selected the alternates and with the bottom percentage, they're in about a hundred and forty-two, a hundred and forty-three thousand dollar range. Just a big question is who's responsible for that? And that's the discussion that still needs to occur, you know, we, we had the testing done, but, uh, you know, everyone's kind of pointing fingers at this point, but, you know, I kind of got the pricing, so we know, at least know the scope of what, what it looks like and how to just figure out.
The third bidder, is it a qualified bidder?
Yeah, I think they just, they need, they need to, they, they, because the bids were due at two o'clock today, they didn't have time to decipher through it. They're gonna get it to me tomorrow. And then, you know, it's customary, when you have these bids, they have something to go through a scope review with the lowest bidder to make sure that they understood what they're bidding on, make sure it included everything, so like, you know, to make sure they included things like, if they tear up the grass along this concrete, they're repairing that. Or did they include the, that Parkside, the metal railing on the steps on the side of the building? Did they include a reinstallation or replacement of that as part of the package? So, you know, the numbers could change a little bit, but we don't expect anything significant at that point.
Do we have to agree to something before a year is over?
I don't, I don't think that's really.
Or is it, we've noted that it's, it's an outstanding item and so now it's kind of just a dispute?
Right, right, so yeah, so we have something to work through that, that part, so I'm not, I'm not sure how that's gonna go at this point.
So this isn't getting done this summer?
The goal is to get it done this summer, I just don't know how that, how that's gonna happen. But something that we have to pay out of pocket and then fight the reimbursement or, I mean, I'm not, I'm not sure at this point.
Yeah, that would be the worst possible scenario.
Right, yeah. It's one of those things, it's, you know, and then you hate the rush and then we're both, we're both learning in the fall, you know.
Right, it doesn't matter.
You know, it doesn't, it doesn't matter at that point. We'll update you as we move on.
Environment's looking good.
And the last thing I have is I was approached by American Towers recently, which put in our cell tower and all that. The guy that called me, he was real, he was really dancing around the topic with what, he kept talking about, you know, we need this amendment to get approved. And he wants to send a meal person information, wants us to reconsider it. We wouldn't tell him what the amendment was, and then he finally said to me, it's, of course, we're requesting to reduce the payments that they want to pay us for having the cell tower on site. So currently, we're, we receive 1,650 dollars a month for that cell tower, so that's about 19,800 per year under our current five-year agreement to, and then we think extend it for additional five-year periods at a 15% rent escalation, so.
And they can change depending on how many carriers.
Yeah, if they add carriers, there's additional payments.
There are additional carriers of 200 dollars a month.
So when the, you know, the cell tower has been going, it took, I don't know, two years to get it up by the time they finalize that. So we're, once the construction started, we started receiving the payments. So we really only had the second year of payments and they're requesting this amendment. They gave us three options.
Exchange for what?
So the three options, I'll go to option three, was a lump sum payment of 195,822 for perpetual easement in lieu of rent payments. So instead of paying us rent, they gave us 195,000 to keep the cell tower there forever. Basically, that would be nine years of rent payments under a refer agreement. So it would be less than one extension of our current agreement that we have. Basically, at year nine, we would have collected 190,800 in rent payments under a refer agreement. So I wondered if it seemed like all that feasible to even consider considering, you know, they want to to have it there forever, basically. So option one, now, just my rents, 1,650 a month, so option one was to reduce the rent to 1,231 dollars per month, starting October 1st. Continue with the 15% escalation for each five-year period. Provide four additional terms of five years each, so they can extend the lease up to September 20th, 2068. Five-year rent guarantee of the new agreement and all other terms remain in effect.
2000.
Sixty-eight.
I'll be 104. I believe they'll give out the time of year.
Option two was to reduce the rent to 1,342 dollars and that would be.
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
It'd be 1,342 dollars per month. But the thing that would change is there'll be a 10% escalation every five years. Providing the four additional five-year lease terms for 2068, the five-year rent guarantee and a signing bonus of 5,000 dollars.
So, I'm sorry, did they justify why why they, is it just out of the blue or what was their reasoning for wanting these changes?
Basically, it was, I don't think I printed the, we, they wished to have a desire to maintain a long-term relationship and that they had gotten pressure from the carrier, which would be Verizon, to reduce the cost, basically. And I think, you know, they didn't really provide any justification other than that of.
Is Verizon the only one on it?
Right, I believe Verizon is the only one on it. I I don't know, you know, I I sent it to our council to look at before I even reviewed it and he's, he'd asked some comments and basically, you know, obviously perpetual, option three of the bio, he didn't advise at all. And, you know, obviously, there's no justification for the rent concession. And, you know, basically, you know, if we agree to option one, over a 20-year period, we're gonna leave 110,000 dollars in rent payments. And we're adding the option to extend it up to, you know, from up to a 50-year term, basically, for no real consideration, I guess.
Dan said it was one of the worst deals he's seen in a career.
Right, like why why would we do it at all? We signed a five-year contract. Why would we possibly do this?
So to me, I I don't, you know, it's why it's not on the agenda. I want to make sure that the board was aware of it and because I I wouldn't recommend that we move forward. I didn't have a chance to to talk to the guy after he sent me, he sent me late Friday or Monday, and I didn't have a chance to call him. They're in California, so by the time, it's, you know, I like to start early in the morning, so if I'm starting at 6:00, 7:00 in the morning, it's 3:00, 4:00 in the morning over there. So, you know, sometimes I I wasn't given a call to find out what what's, why would we be able to do this, you know?
I mean, they're they're not in a very good negotiating position because it would cost that much to, you know, to take the tower down.
Right, they could take it with them, I mean.
Right, so.
But the worst-case scenario is they could close it.
Right, worst-case, they're five years, they terminated.
Well, I don't understand why they just don't pursue more carriers.
Well, right, whose job is it to sell it to more carriers? Theirs, right?
So to me, I'm not recommending we move forward with it and I just wanted to bring it to your attention so you're aware of it. And I'm gonna say, I'm gonna go back and say, no. And not even offer a counter or anything, and just kind of say, you know, we didn't provide any justification for this. And, you know, in time to work, we can cut millions of dollars from the state. We can use every dollar that we can get and, you know, I mean.
Most people are using the phones more and the internet more.
Yes.
So it's not like it's a reverse business.
Right. It's growing business. And then, you know, we hear about these funds for turf replacement, then we get that timeframe in 12, 10, 12, 15 years, whatever that appropriate time is. And the part that, you know, that finds humorous is they want to establish this long-term relationship, yet we're in the second year of payments.
Right.
You know, it's not like we've had this out here for 10, 15 years and they say, hey, maybe we stop the rent escalation or something for a five-year period or something. I just don't know what justification is, you know?
That's great.
Right.
Let's see numbers after the first five.
That's all I have to say to you for it.
Okay. That takes us to public participation.
Oh, maybe I do want to add one here, because public participation has a unique eye on mine.
I see that.
Has not been on the before. So maybe I'll just go through that part real quick.
Okay.
As part of our desperate duty with the I D A funds, federal funds, one of the things they want to make sure that we provide input, allow the community to provide input on how those federal funds are utilized. So there's a new item, A, under the public comment for this this meeting. Basically says that we're inviting the public to provide input into districts' use of federal funds towards education of students with disabilities. Notice the title six, Part B, I D A funds, and the public can provide input through the public portion of this meeting or contact the office of student services at our central office number at 440-352-0668. The traditional public comment section.
Okay. Anyone wishing to address the board of education, we recognize by the board president, speakers are requested to identify themselves and their topic. Comments are limited to three minutes. All right. If no one has anything, we'll move on to consent agenda. Consent agenda provides for more efficient use of time. Any board member can remember the consent agenda item to be discussed and voted on individually. The first one up will be finance and audit.
If we have a motion to approve the items listed on the lengthy finance and audit consent agenda is recommended by the treasurer, items A through double O. I have never seen that before ever. In like 10 years.
I'll I will second that.
Before I ask for any discussion, I just want to say thank you for the donations that are, I can double N on the agenda, for the stage banners, for the graduation from L B L printing, and for some funds from Drama to various donors through the text.
Those banners are beautiful. The graduations are so nice. Yeah.
Yeah, that was great. And the and the money that's coming from Drama, I think, are from patrons who purchased tickets from the play that donated their their funds.
Oh, that's nice.
They had an option that donated, and said they would give it to them.
Right, I know I did that, so. So that's great. That's fun. Is there any discussion on A through double M?
I want to go through a couple of communities, some last-minute revisions to the agendas. I just want to make sure that plenty goes out, so I haven't had a chance to see those. Item I is a parking tax advance legislation. This is like an annual, then it gives the, says given authority to request advances from the county yard, which we've done for years, but they want to formalize that through board resolution.
Is that, we've never done that before?
We did in December for the past fiscal year, and now we should just do it annually at the end of each fiscal year. Just just to formalize the, you know, authority to request the advances from the county yard. Three other items that were on there were just transportation purchase orders that we do each quarter for Honda Freightliner, the discerning voters, and like the oil. Those were added last minute. And then also, we talked about the hand sanitizer, personal protective equipment, resolution authorizing the treasury to issue purchase orders up to 100,000 dollars for hand sanitizer and personal protective, I mean, other safety related items. We're gonna have to wait until the next board meeting if it's more than 15,000, which we know it's going to be, and we're gonna be held up in that process. So we were asking for that authority to move forward with those items as well. And a couple of items under transfers was adjusted just to cover some items and, you know, obviously food service, you know, we were providing meals. We do get federal reimbursement from that, but, you know, we're required to pay staff, we're conserving meals and collecting income from, you know, meal income from regular students. Obviously, the Drama Fund where they set up the the entire play and then canceled at the last minute, the few other funds that ended slightly negative just at the circumstances this year. And then a few advances to our double break funds.
It's really no different than what was on the five-year forecast, though, right?
Yeah, it's pretty similar.
If there is no other discussion on these finance items, can we call the roll, please?
Linda Grassi?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Lori Griskey?
Aye.
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye. Motion carried. Personnel.
Sure, we have a motion to approve the items listed on the personnel consent agenda as recommended by the superintendent, items A through H.
One second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on these items?
I just congratulate the people that are here. I see that, I'm assuming that's your daughter. Congratulations and welcome, and congratulations to Secretary Basset for sending Peter.
Thank you. And I'd just like to say congratulations to Bonnie Now. She's been here forever and she's been a very dependable driver for all of the administrators in every building, so.
I guess so.
Lot of excellent experience going on that we're there.
Can we let stand up for a second so the meeting can see you as well? You're on TV. You're filming in the Parkside Elementary, correct?
Yes.
And one of our new units, the P E in the primary area.
Yes, so it's for students to social and emotional media release on the brand new name at the primary lab.
Well, thanks. Generations of, you know, coming to work here.
Oh, yeah, I went to Manner High School. I graduated in 2016, and then I just graduated from Cincinnati.
Awesome. Yay, welcome.
Thanks.
And your mommy used to work here.
Yeah.
We should also have two other bios to fill in the back that no one knows. John Renwick, he's our new tech director.
Hey, wow, thank you.
John has started in our district basically as a fire, right? It's just, you know, not in a bad sense, but we were we were thinking that would there be a smooth transition with everything going on. John has worked very hard to to transition, and I'll leave it at that. I think him coming in has at least shown the rest of us administrators that he works very hard, he's very responsive, he's very accessible, and not only that, he's very knowledgeable. His interpersonal skills are also very good. With that said, John started his tech career in 1992 as a sole proprietor of a computer store in Yewwood, Ohio. He ran the company until he was offered a position at Lake Geogge Computer Association, or L G C A. John served as a technology director for Fairport Harbor Schools and the Geogge County Educational Service Center and the lead technician for Kirtland Schools until 2015, when he was offered the full-time position as a tech director for Kirtland. John grew up in Manner and currently resides in Willoughby with his wife Cassie and his son John. Would you like to welcome John? We also have Dr. Bassett here. Dr. Bassett, if you'd like to stand up. Dr. Bassett is a proud graduate employee of the Riverside Local School District. Next year, Chris will serve as an assistant principal at the Riverside Campus focusing on the areas of curriculum, college and career readiness, and data analysis. Chris will also be working with some of our 12th grade students as well on a regular assistant principal capacity. Chris has an undergraduate degree in psychology from the University of Mount Union, a master's degree in education from Marietta College, and a doctorate degree in educational leadership from Youngstown State University. During his time with the Riverside Local School District, Chris has served as a classroom teacher, mentor, department chair, and instructional coach, building and district leadership team member, and college and career readiness coordinator. In addition to these teaching and leadership roles, Chris has served as part-time faculty member at Youngstown State University, presented at state administrative and teacher leadership conferences, and assisted the Ohio Department of Education in developing several teacher leadership initiatives. As a senior at Riverside High School, he was a state champion in the shot put. In college, Chris earned nine All-American titles in throwing events. After concluding his throwing career, he completed several iron distance triathlons, marathons, and ultra-marathons. We're gonna have to talk about which ones you ran in to see if I was in there with you. In 2018, Chris was inducted into the University of Mount Union Athletic Hall of Fame. In his free time, Chris enjoys spending time with his family, playing guitar, reading, and exercising. Chris is eager to begin his new position at Riverside High School as we strive to become one community, pursuing greatness and getting better every day. Welcome.
All right, if we have no other discussion on item Z three, can we call the roll?
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Lori Griskey?
Aye.
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Linda Grassi?
Aye.
Motion carried. We have item J on our personnel agenda, item two, recommend Chris Hastings for the head coach of girls soccer effective June 28th, 2020.
That's actually.
Resignation.
Your resignation, I'm sorry.
Resignation.
Resignation. One second, one second. Thank you. Any discussion? Can we call the roll?
Lori Griskey?
Aye.
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Upstate.
Linda Grassi?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Motion carried. Buildings and grounds.
Motion to approve the items listed on the buildings and grounds consent agenda, items A through C, as recommended by the superintendent. May I have a second, please?
One second.
Thank you, Mrs. Grassi. Any discussion? Can you call the roll, please?
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Linda Grassi?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Lori Griskey?
Aye.
Motion carried. It takes us to the board of education update. Anyone else got anything? I just want to say thank you to everybody for making graduation happen the way it did. That was a, was actually a really fun weekend. I think we heard a lot of really good feedback and certainly too to Mrs. McIntyre for all the work she put in. Jamie really did a fabulous job. It was a.
Kids were great, too.
They were. It was fun. It was actually like we were really making a good time.
And we had perfect weather.
That helped. It was amazing, yeah, for sure.
Except for the first day, Mrs. Grassi, she was a full.
It was freezing in the shade, but it was still beautiful.
It was very windy.
It was. It was good, though. So thank you guys all for everything you did to make that happen for our kids. It was great. So if you have anything else? With that, I'll make a motion to adjourn to executive session at 8:31 PM for personnel management appointment and/or employment and compensation. If I can have a second, please.
One second.
Thank you, Mr. Heck. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Linda Grassi?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Lori Griskey?
Aye.
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you all very much.